Good evening, welcome to the December 1st, 2020 meeting. Made it to December. We're ticking away at this year that I think everybody's anxious to see end. Do we have any announcements tonight, Brian?
None from me, thank you, Madam Sharon.
None from me.
I actually don't have any announcements either, so what do you know? The public forum, I'm going to read the public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board.
I guess, you know what, I want to backtrack a little bit because we probably should make an announcement here about Town Hall being open.
Yes.
So, if Town Hall is open again, regular hours, but we are still encouraging townspeople to conduct any business that they can online.
Or by using the Dropbox, which is in the rear of the building, just to minimize how many people are in the building as possible. Certainly, if you need to come in, you need to come in, but if there's something that could be taken care of with a phone call or something like that, we encourage that.
And on top of that, Diana, and I just wanted to reiterate that the people that do come to Town Hall, you need to mask up, wash your hands, social distance. Those rules have not changed whatsoever. And also keep in mind that the hours vary by department, so you may want to call first or check online to make sure that when you come here, the department you want to see is actually open that particular day.
Right. And I guess one more thing to mention, you know, people are so used to this being a building, people can really move about, but we did install barriers in the offices on our different counters, and we would ask that people respect that and not walk behind the barriers and everything, even though I know people are accustomed to feeling like they can, you know, be in offices with people, would just bear with us, hopefully not much longer, and some of these things can be lifted. Okay, so approval of minutes. We have several sets of minutes here.
We do, and I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 21st, 2020, the minutes from March 5th, 2020, and the minutes from February 18th, 2020.
I have a second.
Motion made in a second, any further discussion?
No ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ed?
Aye.
Excuse me.
Okay, COVID update. So, we're joined once again by Carrie. I don't know if you want to grab a mic. So, Carrie, lots to update since the last meeting?
Lots to update, yeah.
Lots, yeah, lots to update, so we'll just turn it over to you and let you take it away.
So, I'll just start with where we are today. I think I've explained this before, but just so people realize that we, as the town, myself specifically, gets day-to-day, daily updates of our numbers, obviously, so as much as people pay attention to the state website and their numbers and information, we --
Sorry.
That's okay. That we, when I give my numbers out, it's not always what the state may have on their weekly report on Thursdays, just so people understand that. So, as of today, we have three positive cases. I just received a new one this morning, so we had had two as of my report yesterday, but obviously we now have three, which then puts six people on quarantine at this point. It's not any kind of certain contact specific to location or place, just so people are aware of that. All the contact tracing's been done, everybody that was contacted has been informed, et cetera, and instructions have been given to those individuals specifically. So, that's where we start with that. So, from two weeks ago, where we were at, I don't know, the numbers all blend now, but we're at 16 cases at one point in time with lots of people on quarantine at that point. So, all those people, I'm sorry, we have seven on quarantine. All the people from that original time, except for one, has been released off of quarantine. So, we have seven in quarantine because there's one individual from the previous grouping that is still quarantined.
We had the little spike there.
Yep. And then, we have all the new ones in the last five days, basically. So, that's where we are with numbers. We obviously move forward with opening up town offices again this week. We really don't have any reason not to. We have plenty of safety guidelines and safety things in effect, and we have had them for months to begin with, and the town has done, I feel, an excellent job of making sure that their employees are safe, be it here, or the highway department, or the schools, et cetera. So, with all those things in place, it was safe enough to agree to opening up. The reason, one of the main reasons of why the school did not open this week for hybrid was, it was a little bit twofold. It was, we're talking 412 people in two buildings, all at the same time. Holiday, Thanksgiving happened, there was a lot of chatter of people that were going to still be traveling and spending time with larger groups of family. So, we decided, as a group, along with my recommendation, to hold off with another week of remote, just for safety reasons.
Because it would be, like, maybe by this weekend or early next week, that we would know if we were going to experience any kind of spike as a result of Thanksgiving.
So, if somebody was exposed on Thanksgiving, the five days would have been yesterday from exposure, which is when you usually would get tested, or you could start showing symptoms. So, which then means you're a carrier at that point, and you're still a carrier, so we just decided that it was safer to not have an outbreak in the school buildings, to go with having an extra week, so that if people did travel, they have the ability to get tested, get the results back. Testing results are taking anywhere from two to five days now to get your results.
Mm-hmm.
It's not as fast as it was before, and that's just because everybody's getting tested right now because of traveling, et cetera. So, it was just the right thing to do for this week.
That was a good call.
So, the plan is for the school to open back up next Monday, December 7th, for hybrid, the hybrid in-person learning that they've had all along. Obviously, that can change at the end of the week if we end up with a high spike in numbers again, or the weekly report comes out and some of our sending towns are at high risk again. It's something we'd have to look at and evaluate again.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's important for people to remember, it's not just what's happening here. We have to pay attention to the towns that send in school choice, so.
Right. So, with that, that's where that seems to lie. And then, the only other thing to bring up is, we had a meeting two weeks ago in regards to FMLA and FF-CRA, which is the federal, it's the Family First, CARES, something, whatever.
Recovery.
There's a lot of words, but anyways, it all has to do with FMLA, it's a portion of FMLA specific to COVID. So, there's pretty strict guidelines that we have to follow, especially if we get audited. So, in that meeting, it was myself and Sharon and Riley with the school administration, obviously Diana, you were there, and Marlene was there, so we had a great discussion, I felt, amongst all of us, that we all agree with the process and what has to happen.
I was not there.
I thought you got on for that meeting.
No, you were there?
No, you were, Diana.
You were there that day?
I was?
Yeah.
With our school.
We were online, right?
Yeah, we were online, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, 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 sorry.
So, it's okay. They all, all the meetings.
I go to a lot of meetings, okay?
So, anyways, it was a great discussion. We came up with a good plan and a good way for the steps to all be taken, and so that, basically, and it's across the board, it's all employees will follow it. If you're at home and you're sick, or if household family member is sick, you're expected to stay home, you're not expected to come to work, and you need to notify your department head. And yesterday, we issued out a letter that's from Sharon and I, specifically in regards to this, and what the process is to follow. So, that was emailed to all.
And just so people are clear, Sharon would be involved in that as the human resources person of the town.
Correct, sorry, yeah. So, Sharon, as a human resource person, has to take care of all that paperwork and documentation. So, then, we sent that letter out yesterday to all department heads to issue it to their employees underneath them, and they, all the employees then will respond back with that they've received it, they understand it, if they have questions, they know to contact us to ask the questions, and then, moving forward, we at least can have a smooth process that we sort of didn't have up to this point, so now it's smoother.
And most importantly, be consistent.
Right, and be consistent. Like, everybody, it's not, it's, all the guidelines and the rules are the same for everybody, it doesn't make a difference. And it's important that people realize that, especially specific to COVID, that this money is here to cover you for the 14 days, so that you're not burning sick time or vacation time to be out because you're sick. So, it really is an important process for us to make sure our employees are following and filing for, so that they get what's right to them, really.
Well, yeah, I mean, a provision that's been made for.
Well, it's been made for everybody, but at least all of our employees will know about it, and everybody knows that they have this ability, just if it comes to be, because we don't want anybody to feel like they're going to burn out their sick time or anything like that.
Question, Carrie, to interrupt, but is that also across the board for part-time employees and also independent contractors?
So, the FF-CRA is for anybody, any employee, no matter where you work, it's your business, the business should be, has to offer it, because it's family medical leave-out part. So, for us here, and for Hatfield specific, yes, it would be for part-time, it would be for, like, our firefighters, things like that, they all have the ability, and they are expected to actually file the paperwork, so that we can keep track of who might be out due to symptoms, et cetera.
If I may, I think what Bob was asking, though, was, it would apply to any employee or part-time employee that would currently, non-COVID, be eligible for any sort of FMLA. So, because you mentioned independent contractor.
Right, yes. Well, I was thinking of somebody like our health agent, who is not.
Who's not really, really an employee, right?
Not really an employee.
Would come under benefits of the town, but.
He doesn't come under benefits, but he still qualifies for FMLA.
Okay, that's a precursor. If you qualify for FMLA, then for a COVID-related illness, you would qualify for this additional funding.
Correct.
Good question, thank you.
And Sharon knows way more details than I do in specific to that, because it has nothing to do with me, per se, but we would rather all the employees let us know, and then we can take the right steps to make sure that it's done right, so that everybody's offered the same stuff of whatever they qualify for at that point.
And hopefully, we won't have.
Yeah.
I'm hoping we don't, we haven't had two really so far, so we've only had one or two, which is great, and it was a sort of a smooth process, and so it's not anything difficult, but now that we're coming into winter months, I just, we want to make sure everybody knows.
Well, and I think we want to make, so thank you for doing that, thanks for sending out the email, and we just need to make sure all the department heads and the various organizations in town understand the process.
Right.
The exact process, not their interpretation of the process.
Right.
But the process.
Right. And it's been made abundantly clear as we possibly can, and it has been for months, but.
And so that proper channels are followed.
Correct.
So, again, I can't.
With no extra steps.
That we don't need extra stress, extra steps, because it causes unneeded stress and frustration amongst many people.
Right.
So, we've said this before, and I will announce it again, that COVID-related issues, no matter what department it's coming from, from the town, should be directed towards me, so that I can guide that department head in whatever steps they're supposed to take, and if I need assistance from Marlene or Sharon in regards to that, then that will happen, but otherwise, I'm pretty well-versed in what's supposed to happen, and so I would rather people be instructed by me, like we've been trying to do from the beginning, versus getting wrong information or misguided information, which then makes people concerned, frustrated, whatever, and we don't want that. People are already scared as it is, we don't need more.
Exactly, it's a confusing and frustrating situation, and so when you have different people disseminating different information, it just adds to that, so let's try to keep this streamlined.
I know you guys are trying to keep this streamlined.
Right, so, with that said, everything else seems to be copasthetic, I guess, it's as good as it can be.
Yeah, thank you for the update.
Additionally, Carrie, because we did experience that, you know, spike a couple of weeks ago, and what that did to your position, and the time constraints and the limitations that you had, we are discussing tonight, getting you some help, and we're joined by the Board of Health for this discussion. So, there's a proposal to have an assistant COVID coordinator come on. Now, this is 15 to 20 hours a week, but wouldn't it be as needed?
It is, it's as needed, but that person, the one that we're going to be talking about tonight, won't be going more than 20 hours, because if we do, then we have to offer benefits, and we're not going to do that.
But I mean, if we don't need anything, then.
Correct, then we won't need anything, yes. Some weeks could be that there's nothing, and some weeks it could be there's 15 hours.
And just so townspeople understand, when there's a positive case, that kicks in a certain amount of work for Carrie, with contact tracing and notifications and all of that sort of thing. And when the numbers all came in like that, it was, you know, really a big job, and everything needs to be done really timely, so we had talked about bringing someone, having someone ready, so that, heaven forbid, we experience that again, they're ready to jump in, and so that everything can be done as quickly as possible.
Right.
Yeah. Did you want to speak to it additionally, or?
We had obviously talked about it in meetings, and actually Chief de Koshak came forward and suggested Mr. Palmeroy as a person to consider, and I reached out to Scott and discussed the situation with him, and asked him if he was interested. And Scott has a background, obviously, he's our annual control officer, so he's already an employee of the town, and also, he was, a few years back, he was firefighter and EMT for the town, so he knows the importance of confidentiality, and how much that is important in this situation. So, I think Scott's a great candidate for being the assistant in that matter, because he has enough of, like, a medical background too, to understand the process, and he has the time right now.
I was going to say, so he has the availability, if, you know, if you need him right away for a certain amount of hours.
Yes, so he and I chatted, and he knows that it will never be more than 20 hours a week, because we can't. We've got a big problem if it's more than 20 hours a week for him and I jointly, so we, you know, it is what it is at that point, but.
Can I add something else?
So, that's where we've, in talking with him, and I did discuss it with Marlene and stuff, and I reached out to Brian and Diane, I spoke to both of you too, I just think that Scott's a good choice for us to move forward with.
And this will all be through the CARES Act?
Correct.
Funding, so. Ed?
I just have one question, going back to our conversation on getting you some help. I'm not against any of what you're proposing, I'm just saying, the question was, that I had, was some of the responsibilities of tracing, whether or not the Board of Health in any way could assist you, or is it better that you have an assistant do some of this? I'm just trying to understand.
I'm happy to take the help wherever it comes from. Scott is a good addition, but I'm not saying that any of the three board members aren't a possibility either, that is a possibility, but I need to know that, like, Scott has the availability and the time right now, where I know, I mean, I know at least one of the, or two of the three are busy as it is, and I don't know what their lives all entail, so, I mean, it's been discussed and brought up, but that, I mean, I came forward with Scott as a suggestion, you guys, you, between the two boards, are the ones that are going to make the decision, it really doesn't have anything to do with me.
Okay, like I said, I'm not against the proposal, I'm just trying to understand how to get your assistance, and if there's anything, whether the Board of Health also supports this option of an assistant, because of your commitments or responsibilities.
And if I could speak to that just briefly, one, I'd just like to thank Carrie for, you know, the great jobs she did when we had the outbreak, and it was just such a large task that it'd be overwhelming to anybody, not only somebody that's also working in another full-time job, so that, you know, it is an important thing to, as Diana mentioned, it's got to be done timely, or we miss the window to stop the spread. So, that's where having somebody, you know, available to step right in, and a designated person to step in, rather than, you know, might be Liz one day, me another day, Jeff another day, if we're all busy. And also, keep in mind that this position requires a certain degree of training, you don't just step into it and know how to contact trace, it's, you know, got to be taught to be done properly. So, you know, having somebody that's designated, that's trained to do it, as a backup, and Diane, as you mentioned, were brought up, we hope that it'll never get so busy that we even have to use the assistant, but we can't rule that out, because it was very clear that we did need somebody a few weeks ago.
Realistically, we need to be prepared.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, we had been pretty lucky.
Yeah.
Up to a couple of weeks ago, but I think that was a real shot of reality for us, and we know it's possible here, and, you know, we want to make sure we're not, you know, delaying taking, being proactive about making sure we can handle it if it happens again.
Yeah, and as it was, I think when Carrie was kind of having a lot of that overload going on, I think it was Liz, you volunteered to track down something that was going on at one of the local stores, to follow up on a complaint. So, you know, certain things, yes, we can do, and, you know, especially if it's related to enforcement, because that's what our, the Board of Health is all about, is enforcing the public health laws.
And there has been a few situations that I've been able to just hand off those emails or those complaints directly to them, and one of them is taking care of it, so, which makes it much easier that I don't have to go dealing with that.
Right, so there's a difference, right? So, there's people who might complain about being somewhere and not seeing masks, or other proper procedures being followed, and then there's actual COVID cases and all of that.
Which I have no issues going and dealing with, and it's fine, but when I was doing all those contact tracing, dealing with complaints of people not wearing masks was not something I was going to be dealing with at that moment.
Right.
So, Liz did go and handle that situation for me, which was good.
I think that might actually be a good delineation, you know, let Carrie and Scott kind of do the whole COVID and active cases and tracing, and then anything other than, because of the training involved, and then anything other than that, like we do now, we, Carrie or Scott or anybody, would relay it to the Board of Health to investigate, and then, there's always that communication, I know already exists, between everybody, so.
The other benefit is, is, I mean, obviously, we're in the holiday season, and, you know, there's going to be gatherings and more groups, so you start doing tracing, and if there's something that happens, you're dealing with a larger amount of people.
Exactly.
Now, if you know you have a large group, if she can call Scott up and say, hey, look, you know, there's a lot of people we got to get hold of here, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
That would probably, you know, make the process go quicker, but obviously, we know the quicker the process goes, the less, you know.
The less exposure we've got, which is huge. But we only, by the state guide, the state rules and way the tracing happens, I'm supposed to make contact with a positive case and their contacts within 72 hours of finding out they were positive.
Yeah.
And the problem is, is that with testing taking so long to get back, I've had, recently, I've had people who have already been sick for four or five days before they find out they're positive, and thankfully, they've been diligent to make contact with all the people they had contact with, saying, hey, I'm sick, I've been tested, but I'm waiting for my results, which is huge, because if I end up with one positive case, and they had contact with 10 people, but we don't find out that they're positive until five or six days after they're sick, all those 10 people now have been all over, doing whatever, going to work, being amongst their families, whatever the case may be, and it's just a bigger deal, in my opinion. I would rather, like, knowing, having Scott coming on is a huge, like, it is, it's a benefit, because the smaller things, I can hand off to these guys, and they're going to take care of it, and I know that, and then the contact tracing stuff, I can teach Scott, and then, if I need him, I can say, okay, I need you this day to help me out do this many things.
And unfortunately, the truth of the matter is that not everybody's completely helpful with the contact tracing, or willing to speak with you and give you the adequate or accurate, I should say, information. So, it can become a big job, and something that you have to be, you or Scott will have to be really diligent about continuing to contact these people to get this information. That's a really unfortunate, I am shocked, and was shocked to hear some of that, but that's another reality that.
That's another whole conversation.
That is another whole.
One of the biggest problems is just the whole testing procedure. How many days if somebody thought they were exposed to somebody? All right, well, it's only been so many days, now you got to go try to get a test. Try to get a test.
Right.
You know? You try is the key word here.
And now they're actually saying some people were testing too soon.
Right, and then you have to wait, so by the time, I mean, in all honesty, it's, you're, how about seven days, basically?
You are.
So, in seven days, a lot happens in seven days, you know, as we know, so that's why this is, you know, such an awful thing, because, I mean, there's no way of containing it, it's like.
But, you know, you make an excellent point, that if this happens again, the contact tracing could be much larger.
Right.
Because of the holidays, that's a, another unfortunate, thanks for all the great news, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks for the great news, because it's going to be my day.
Here to help.
You know, I think it's important for people to know that anybody can come down with a virus.
Yeah.
It's easily, so it's not as though you're a typhoid mayor, you're going to be put in a room someplace.
Right.
And it's important for people to realize that, you know, you come in contact with family members, neighbors, or whatever, people out in stores, or, you know, at meetings like this, but, you know, when you get that call from a contact tracer, you know, be honest, there's nothing to, no, it's not shameful, you know, it's the more information you can give, the better off the whole town will be.
Yeah, agreed.
The other thing is, not only are you going to be in some fault.
Particularly with people in your closest circle, which most of us want to protect.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, one other thing that we considered and thought about, you know, when Carrie was just getting overwhelmed, was, you know, do we subcontract this out to an outside agency to do contract tracing or to help out? And somebody from, you know, a public health nursing agency wouldn't know the people that are being called.
Right.
They don't know the contacts, they don't know the context of what's going on in the town, so, you know, having somebody that's from town, like Carrie, Scott, who also is local, it makes a world of difference.
It really does, because the familiarity, you know, even if people are trying to be as accurate as possible with contact tracing, you know, Carrie knows people well enough to say, oh, but did you see so-and-so?
Right.
You know, and remind them, you know, so, yes, exactly, oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Too personal.
Yeah, so, I, no, I think that, I think that townspeople will feel much better, too, having this job be handled by residents that many people know.
And just for you guys to also, because you did bring it up about the subcontracting out, which I know was discussed at one point in time, the only place you can really subcontract out is to this group, CTC.
Yes.
However, the state had all these people working for CTC, and then they laid them all off because the numbers went down, and now the numbers are up, and I got a phone call to Friday, from a person at CTC, from a different town, to tell me about two contacts that live in our town, two and a half weeks after the person that they would have been exposed from.
Yeah.
So, that's something that everybody needs to realize, not you guys, but I mean, townspeople, just as we're talking about this, having it subcontracted out is not safe for our residents. That's my personal opinion, after doing this for almost nine months, it's not safe for our residents to not have somebody in-house or in-town doing the contact tracing like we have then.
I think certain things just don't lend themselves for that, to, I don't want to say that they wouldn't be as committed as a townsperson would be, but they're, you know, they're just working for whoever's paying them to work, and I, right, and I think in any town, not just ours, but any city or town, when you have somebody that I guess you would say has a vested interest, it makes a difference, I believe, for certain, for something like this, for sure. Other things, yes, you can contract out, but this isn't one of them.
And the girl who was so apologetic, because she was mortified, because it just came up on her thing of the day to do, and she's going through all of her assignments, and here's one that's two weeks late, and she said to me, she goes, I can't believe I have to make this phone call to you, I'm so sorry, so she was, they're just overwhelmed themselves because they are all short-staffed with so many communities that have high numbers, so I just want townspeople to realize that.
Honestly, if I'm going to get a phone call from someone saying I've had contact with a COVID-positive person, I would really much rather hear it from Carrie or from Scott, I hope you don't call me, but.
Yeah. I hope I don't.
I know. But, you know, so I just, I think Scott's an excellent candidate and particularly because of what you mentioned about confidentiality. Because that is really important. And one of the things I just want to stress, because I've seen a lot of this on social media, particularly when we were having the spike of people saying, who is it? You know, where is this happening? What are the addresses? Is this at a business? Asking me, sending me private messages asking about it. Obviously that is not information that is ever going to be publicly disseminated. And you should really think about that for a minute because it could be you that's the positive case and you wouldn't want, you know, all of that posted everywhere. Even though, like you say, there's no shame in this. It's still all protected by HIPAA and people who need to be notified will be notified.
And there's no shame.
And if you don't need to know, if you haven't heard from anybody, you can relax.
Right. And yes, there's no shame in it, but on the flip side, everybody doesn't need to know.
Exactly.
Like, it's a private situation and only the immediate people need to know. Like, everybody, we, I discussed this a few weeks ago. We had a major problem and one of our businesses got blasted for it in this town and they never should have.
Exactly.
Because too many people talked and made up stories and none of it was ever true. And it hurt their business. And drastically enough that they had to shut down for the last couple of weeks. And thankfully, from what I saw today, they're opening on Thursday.
Oh, that's so great.
That's what I saw, but I'm hoping that that's true. I don't know if you guys have heard that or not. But thankfully they're able to open back up again. But, I mean, we've got businesses that have had to shut down because of this. And to have the last one shut down because of gossip of the town is, I was horrified by it.
I agree.
And not for nothing, I had to take the brunt of it because I had to deal with the owner and explain to him that it didn't come from any of us, meaning the seven of us. That put the word out there to people in the town like it was something that needed to be addressed.
Yeah. I mean, we all know that the rumor mill is alive and well in this town. That's nothing new, but I just want people to be a little bit more careful, you know, about the things that they're saying or speculating or whatever, particularly on social media, because that just goes crazy and people are getting hurt by it.
Right. And contact tracing, I can only do it if they are a town resident. Or if I'm called from another community to say that a town resident or an employee of a business works in our town, they will call and tell me that. I've had it a couple of times recently. But other than that, like, I can't contact trace if they don't live here. And if I'm not informed about it, I can't tell businesses about the fact that they have an employee. I mean, thankfully, people have been honest to their employers, which is really important. But, and that falls even here too. I mean, like, again, if you're sick, stay home. If your family, household, family member is sick, stay home. And will, no matter if it's here or any other business, your employer's going to figure out what they got to do to take care of the job business at that point. Because your health and your safety is more important than anything else.
Right. And the health and safety of all their other employees.
And the safety of all their other employees.
And so, which circles us back to the beginning of this conversation about FMLA and FF-CRA. So people shouldn't be afraid to tell their employers or do this reporting because there are provisions for people to be, you know, make sure that there isn't a real financial hit for having to be out for COVID-related reasons. So, okay, so it sounds like we're all in agreement about, Scott, we need to do a joint vote? Is that correct?
So my understanding.
I mean, we just did the vote for you.
So you approved me, but then I had to go to their board meeting for them to vote me on as a health agent. So you, so it's two separate votes. My understanding is that you guys will vote to appoint him, but they need to vote to appoint him as a health agent to the town.
Okay. Are we going to do it all here tonight? Are you guys posted tonight?
They are.
And you're going to submit your minutes for this and everything?
I think it's the same secretary. The minutes are the same, so.
Maybe Marlene can copy and paste them into your, you know, okay. Because you're taking, oh, Key's taking them.
She's in the other room.
Oh, she's in the other room. Okay.
And just, I understand that, Carrie, you mentioned, we will be accepting, approving Scott as the Assistant COVID Coordinator.
Coordinator.
So I believe that procedurally though, the Board of Select needs to create the position. And then secondly, the two boards would then vote on the person to fill that position. Is that correct, Marlene?
It doesn't need to be.
One vote with both boards. It can be two separate votes.
Right. But one is about opposition and then one is about filling the position.
Filling the position, right.
Anything you want to say before we take a vote?
I just want to say that the goal of getting you help, it seems like we've got that resolved. So that's a positive. And now people understand why the need for an assistant, because that was discussed. So that's a positive. So we got those two issues. I mean, my last issue doesn't have to do with this issue. I do have a question in reference for later on the money. Because a while back, we were talking the school was going to be spending a lot of extra money. I don't know if we ever got an answer back from them, if they're spending more than that's there or where that money situation is. So that's just for a later, later issue.
And while you guys are discussing that, because I probably won't be here, CARES ends December 31st.
Mm-hmm. I cannot believe that there hasn't been action.
As of today, December 1st.
I would hope that in the meantime, there'll be some type of federal.
I know, but I just want you guys to be aware of it. Sorry. I hate to be the bearer of bad news in regards to that, but.
We were on such a positive trajectory.
We were. And I had to drop that last little bomb in. Sorry.
Sharon.
Sorry, but even if the money is extended, there's no more money. So unless they give us more CARES money.
No, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. We would need more.
Right.
Yeah. We have pretty much, yeah, spent that money, yeah.
Well, and, you know, realistically, if the holidays are creating a problem, January is going to be a busy month, potentially for COVID coordinators. So everywhere, not just here.
Yeah, not just Hatfield. So I just want you guys to be aware of that.
Okay, so, so that is a separate discussion, not on the agenda tonight. But you're actually, you're right on the money to keep, no pun intended, to talk about this. So I will take a motion to create the Assistant Coordinator position.
I will make a motion to create the Assistant COVID-19 Coordinator. It's a temporary position and to be paid through the CARES Act funding, which ends on December 31st, 2020.
Okay, I'll second that.
Can I just add that we should save, do we need to identify the hourly rate and everything?
It is listed there.
It's here, so we're just going to go off the paper. Okay.
So a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Just that we would make sure the minutes reflect it won't go higher than 20 hours too.
Right. I'll update this. So as need, 15 to 20 hours per week as needed.
Or I thought it would say works as, I would think it just.
Works as needed.
As needed, but no more than 20 hours per week, is how it really should be wording. Because otherwise.
Because like this week and next week, hopefully I'm not going to need them.
That's the other thing. I mean, you're creating another position, but it's an as-needed position. Now, what if something were to happen to Carrie?
Right.
You know?
Yes, well, that's a great point.
It's great to have, you know, it's, you need to spare tires sometime, you know what I mean? And that's another thing that, you know, wasn't brought up during this discussion.
Right. And if I'm not, though I'm not busy this weekend next, he's going to have to get trained, so he'll have to get paid.
Yeah.
But I want to get him on board and train as soon as quickly as possible. So again, hopefully it's not going to happen, but if something happens to me.
You're right. I mean, no one's immune, we just said.
There is going to be a training period. You're probably going to have to spend, you know, 15, 20 hours.
At least.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let that be known as well.
Yeah.
Well, Carrie, I think you mentioned that you were going to hopefully be able to cut down your hours or limit your hours to.
Well, it has to be because the position can't be more than 40 hours in a week anyways, between the two of us.
Right.
Unless it's an absolute emergency. There has been a week or two that I did go over the hours, but that was during the contact tracing that I specifically went over. But we shouldn't be, there shouldn't, for a temporary position, we shouldn't be paying overtime to anybody. So.
Yeah, no.
I'm just, meaning to myself or to him, we really shouldn't be, so.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we have to actually vote to appoint Scott.
I'll make a motion to appoint Scott Pomeroy, our Assistant COVID Coordinator.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, this will be up to the board to.
To do the same thing.
Yeah. And what we'll do is call to order our Board of Health meeting with the express purpose of accepting or not accepting Scott Pomeroy as the Assistant COVID Coordinator. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept Scott Pomeroy as the Assistant COVID Coordinator.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion has been passed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I now close this Board of Health meeting.
Why can't they all?
Yeah, no kidding, right?
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Working together on this with us and Carrie, as always, thank you very much.
Can I add one last thing, just because you guys are all here? Bob and I talked earlier today. The Board of Health, I've talked with Marlene, needs desperately an office again because Scott and I need a place to be able to have all these documents secured and safe. I've been currently nicely of my husband. The fire chief has allowed me to be working out of the fire station. But now that we're going to have an assistant, I really need to get those documents out of the office over there and into one here where they're secured and private. So Marlene and I had talked last week. I talked with Bob. And the office that used to be the COA office upstairs, because now the COA has moved downstairs, it looks like it's the best option for the Board of Health, which will get them on the first floor, which is huge because I think it's important for Key to be able to have the documents and not having to be going up and down the stairs 1,000 times a day.
Or the elevator.
Well, now there's an elevator, but before.
Just wanted to make sure. We knew there was an elevator.
But either way, so I talked with Bob and he seems to be on board and I know he was going to talk about it with you guys.
Yeah, we spoke today.
So moving forward, we really need to get that office set up for the Board of Health and I don't know who can make the.
Can I ask, because Phil's not in this office anymore, correct?
I don't believe so.
Isn't that one bigger?
That's where, yeah, I.
I don't think we need a gigantic office. An office will work. I just, the movement of stuff needs to move.
May I ask a question?
I think we're happy with a smaller office.
I'll be glad to coordinate.
You're all set.
I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Yes, we are.
Get it out. Yes, yes, yes. And, you know, that's easier if residents come in too, looking for the Board of Health.
And we did talk about that, that the Sharps, they're doing the Sharp program so that'll make it accessible for, in the office upstairs, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just going to be nice to have a Board of Health office.
Yeah, let, make that happen as quickly as possible.
Okay.
And if it does involve sharing that space with some file cabinets from the.
Accountant.
Accountant. Okay. I think we'll find you that.
Yeah.
There's still enough space.
Help moving things. You could be in touch with Phil and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I'll talk to Michael, it's too. I'll take care of it.
Okay, good.
Take care of it.
Awesome. Just wanted to make sure we discussed this. I'm sorry.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Feel free to stay if you'd like.
I didn't want to mention it, but we're actually over occupancy on this night.
No, we're not.
Right at it. Lucky number 10.
And I know Bobby Betzel's outside waiting. I think he's probably just waiting for everybody to head out.
Oh, someone told me he was going to join us via Teams.
He texted me today and said he was coming in.
Oh, good.
You know, I never asked if anyone was on the computer for Community Forum or anything.
Oh, well, let's see. Fire chief just joined us a little while ago. And the school, it looks like school superintendent maybe is, yes, is Marty. So I think that's the school superintendent.
Okay.
Is Bobby here?
We're good.
Sharon, do you know? Thanks.
He might just be waiting till people leave to come in.
Well, we're still on camera, so let's.
No, I looked in and saw that people were here. I said, I think I'll stay outside.
Exactly. Good idea. Hi, Bobby. Thanks for coming in tonight. So Bobby Betzel is here to give a full, comprehensive explanation of luminaryum and fireworks this year because there's really some specific things people need to know. So that there's specific things they don't do and specific things they do do. So Bobby, we'll give you the floor.
Perfect. I'm actually going to start first with a non-luminaryum topic, but a 350th topic, so.
Look at him all decked out in his swag.
Hey, I had to be ready to go.
Yeah.
It's the perpetual marketer. So first off, just an announcement. We are, we have formed the Time Capsule Subcommittee for the 350th Anniversary. That group is going to be meeting for the first time next Wednesday, the ninth, at 6:00 PM virtually. And the post, I think it went up on Facebook today as well. Anyone who is interested in either potentially being part of that, assisting, has ideas, this is going to kind of be the kickoff informational meeting and then they'll be meeting more going forward than that. So anyone who is interested, information will be up on Facebook, on the 350th website, or they can email timecapsule@hatfield350.com.
We are fancy.
Thank you to Susan Slish and Kim Baker, who are going to be heading up that Subcommittee, so.
And one of the things I want to mention about the Time Capsule is that I know there's a proposal to do multiple Time Capsules, which I really love. So one that might be a 25-year and a 50-year and a, you know, 100-year, whatever the decision is. I think that's a great idea. So.
You're welcome.
Obviously, I think different things and all of those, so.
Certainly. So that was the first one, just since we had the audience wanted to go through that.
How about the postmark? Do you want to finish that?
Yep, I'm going to hit that as well. So that kind of transitions us into luminaryum. So a lot of people aren't aware of this, but the post office offers a program for a cancellation stamp for a special event essentially that you can get. It's a commemorative stamp that is actually used to cancel mail on a certain day. So we've been exploring this and another thank you to Kathy Olson for really taking the lead on this and getting the information her and also Jason, the postmaster here for us. So what is going to be happening is there's going to be a commemorative cancellation stamp for the two days prior to luminaryum and then the day of luminaryum. So December 17, 18, and 19. It'll be at the School Street Post Office. People don't have to send mail that day. They certainly can and it will be canceled with that. Or they can just show up with an envelope and have it canceled onsite with the stamp. So that'll be December 17, 18, 19 for the commemorative 350th luminaryum cancellation stamp that'll be running. So it's really cool. It gets published in a national book of all the commemorative stamps and people can actually send in letters to be done and all that and collections and whatnot for that. So again, kind of a unique and cool thing to have us be a part of and timing it in with luminaryum as well.
And the timing of it is great if people wanted to purposely mail holiday cards on the, one of those days and, you know, maybe mail themselves something that they then have the cancellation on. So very, very unique, something we added to the 350th, you know, in light of everything going on, so.
And it's also, we're going to have more information coming out. We're looking at potentially trying to set something up just to ease the burden of, you know, not having as many people in the post office. So depending on the weather, we may be able to do something either outside or in the lobby or something like that. So we're going to be looking at that, working with Jason on that for potential options that we may have. So then the big one, luminaryum. Like everything this year with the 350th, luminaryum was intended to be a much bigger celebration and we've had fireworks scheduled for it. I am happy to report that luminaryum is happening and fireworks are happening. Saturday, December 19th. We've confirmed a lot of details and even confirmed some more details today. So unfortunately, due to COVID, we're not going to be able to get together and gather in front of town halls we normally do. It's just not feasible and not practical to get that many people together and whatnot. So fortunately, what we've been able to do though is to kind of take a unique spin on things. And we're going to take the Hatfield Luminaryum Program and we're going to get it out to the entire Pioneer Valley thanks to the cooperation and assistance of KIX 100.9. So the Hatfield Program, the speeches and caroling, which will be some pre-recorded music, and thank you to John as well, who's going to help us produce this,[1708.74] music, and thank you to John as well, who's gonna help us produce this, that will go out on KIX throughout their entire airwaves. So, pretty much everyone from, you know, Hartford area to Worcester to Brattleboro is gonna hear the Hatfield Luminarium program on the 19th. The timing of that, we will go on the air at 6:00 PM, that will be the start with the speeches, and then the fireworks will go off at 6:15. So, you'll have speeches, and then you'll have caroling in the background during the fireworks display that will go off at 6:15. So, again, kind of a unique way, it helps us to avoid the gathering. We really want to encourage people to get in your car with your family, you know, with the people who you live with and you're in the household with. Go out, tune into the radio, listen to the program, find a spot, pick out, we'll have more details coming as far as, you know, the fireworks and some potential road closures that are probably gonna happen during the fireworks, so allow people to park, and those type details, and be able to do that in a safe, socially-distanced, responsible manner, and still enjoy the night. Along those lines, the other thing that we really want to try and push this year is, this is also the 40th anniversary of Luminarium. So, it's not just the 350th, but it's a big year for Luminarium as well. Since we can't come together in person, we really want to make this the biggest and best Luminarium we've had. You know, is a lot of great participation through Maple Street, Main Street, and kind of the center area here. We want to get it all around town, you know, and really get everyone in, get your decorations out, get your bags or your, you know, milk jugs or whatever it may be with the candles, and we're really trying to push it as "Light Up the Night." So, you know, really light up the whole town, light up the night, and we'll cap it off with the fireworks display and go from there. So, I think that is all the details on it. Again, we'll have a bunch going up on Facebook, on the website, we're gonna have some robo-calls going out, I talked to Bob today, and we'll do that, and go from there. So, certainly, if there's any questions or anything.
Just a, you know, great job, and this is, you know, even recently, had to sort of change gears on this and everything, but excellent job, Bob, of course, as always. Just a couple of things I would want to mention is that people don't have to feel like they have to be right down here to see the fireworks, and you touched on it somewhat, they're gonna be, you're gonna be able to see them from a number of locations all throughout town, you're gonna be able to see them from Hadley. So, people should really think about, maybe if they can just watch them from their yard, if they wanna, you know, drive in the car, sit in the car, and listen to 100.9, and, you know, find a spot where they can sit and watch them, so people don't have to feel like they have to be all down here, because of course, traffic is always an issue during Luminarium. And I know you said we'd get information out about road closures, but we have this opportunity now, so we know for a fact that Billings Way is closed.
We know, yeah, Billings Way is definitely gonna be closed that day because it's a secure location with the fireworks.
That's where they're gonna be actually staged, it's down by the community gardens.
They're gonna fire off from the pavilion, from the black top of the pavilion.
Okay, so, so, all afternoon, no one can get down Billings Way.
Correct.
And that, you know, I think a lot of people might anticipate parking down there, so that's really important information.
Yep, and that's where they're gonna be shot off from, so when you kind of think about viewing areas, obviously, the block is the most common thought, but even, you know, I was out on 5 and 10 today, and looking back towards the river, and you think about when you see a hot air balloon over the river, you know, and that's about the height that you're gonna see a lot of these, you know, these fireworks are at, and you can see it from a long ways, so there are a lot of good places, you mentioned. You know, when we go down the drag strip, we can see, you know, the library and the towers at UMass, I mean, the towers are still, you know, a couple hundred feet up only. So, you're gonna see these from a lot of places.
Right, these are being shot, how many feet?
500 feet.
500 feet.
You know, so there, yeah, you're gonna see it from a long ways, there are gonna be some places we need to find too, and I've talked with Mike a little bit, Chief Mike Decosack a bit, we need to, you know, hone in on exactly what the road closure's gonna be, but in all likelihood, it's going to be Maple, Main, and possibly a section of school. We gotta figure out all those details with him in the next week or so, and those details will be put out, and we're also have message boards out for people as well.
And from what I understand from talking to him, it's not that they're really gonna be closed, it's just that traffic will be stopped for the duration of the fireworks. In other words, we don't want cars moving while the fireworks are going, so everybody will be stopped, and then the traffic will be allowed to move.
Yeah, essentially, it'll be, you kind of create stop points at 15 minutes before, say, like that. Get in, find your place you wanna pull over and park, and then as soon as fireworks are over, then you can get out. It's just so that we don't have any-
It's just a safety thing, we just don't want people driving while there's fireworks, and then obviously, we've touched upon this at a couple of meetings, but this year, we won't be allowing horse-drawn carts down there for obvious reasons, it wouldn't be a good idea with the fireworks. And another reason we're doing the robo-calls, a couple of them, and starting them fairly soon is, you know, because there's also people who don't like fireworks, pets who don't like fireworks, we just want to make sure people know where they're gonna be lit off so that they can make any kind of provisions if they need to-
Correct.
-for something like that, so.
And, you know, I know you did also on a point, you know, certainly, you know, the horses, you know, obviously in the past, there's been a lot of horse-drawn wagons and that. We also need to keep in mind this year also those, because of the gatherings and that type stuff, so, you know-
Yeah.
Unfortunately, a lot of the traditional-
Wagons.
-events and wagons and get-togethers on that aren't gonna be possible, and, you know, we certainly want to continue to getting that message out there, that, you know, we can't let our guard down, obviously the discussion that just happened, you know, and everything, so that's where we're really trying to push this, with the get in the car with your family, with who you live with, and go enjoy the night that way. If you do go to a place and you park and you get out, put your mask on, keep your distance, you know, just everyone do their part.
Yeah, and, you know, it's a unique way to celebrate the 40th, and then we'll start fresh again next year with getting back to some of the traditional, more traditional ways we've done it, I'm sure.
So, Billings Way is closed, if people park in front of the library, which I'm gonna anticipate they might be thinking of doing, how far can they walk before they're gonna be stopped?
They won't get past the front of the school, the grass area in front of the elementary school is as far as you're gonna be able to go.
Yeah.
As you know, that's probably gonna be one thing people will be thinking of.
Yeah, I guess, you know, my hope is that-
Call me this maybe?
Yeah.
My hope is that with this absolutely phenomenal thing that you've worked out with 100.9, that that will encourage people to stay in their cars, you know, and listen to the program, and listen to the music, and watch the fireworks, and then move around town and enjoy all the lights that I'm sure people will put out. So, it's kind of like, I'm hoping, more of a vehicle event than an on-foot event.
And I think you certainly, I mean, you may, depending on where you park, you may get out of your vehicle, but, you know, sit on the hood, or-
Right.
Sitting in the back of a truck or something like that, but, yeah, I mean, we certainly, we wanted to discourage, you know, people going and sitting in a field or any of that type stuff, I mean, I think about like, Smith Academy will be a great place if people wanna go park, park in the parking lot, and they can sit there and they can watch them, you know, and that type stuff, or, you know, there'll be some limited parking here around Town Hall, but in general, it's not a park somewhere and walk and go sit in a field and bring your chairs and then that type stuff.
Yeah, and I think it's gonna be actually nice to watch them, maybe even from a little further distance, you know, and then the other thing to mention is, it's not your typical fireworks display, because it's winter, and, you know, in all likelihood, it'll be cold, it's gonna be basically one huge grand finale. So, they're just all gonna fly, and it's like 15 solid minutes, right?
It's a 25-minute display crammed into 15 minutes.
Yes, so, it's gonna be terrific.
Sounds it.
Yeah.
And the other kind of unique and cool thing is, with the KIX deal, is, you know, this is gonna give us a chance to, you know, put our program out there, you know, something that's a really unique and cool event, to a very broad area. And KIX is also gonna do some promotion ahead of time on it, and, you know, we'll certainly get the word out, so, you know, it's a chance for us to share this really cool and unique event that we have in town that has a lot of history.
Right.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Well, first off, I want to ask, where can townspeople buy all the apparel that the walking billboard known as Bobby Betzel is wearing tonight? That's question one. So, you guys have a website?
Yes.
Is that-
So, it's on our website, and it's on Facebook, there's an online store through there.
Hatfield350.org?
Dot com.
Dot com.
Dot com is our website.
Hatfield350.com.
Okay.
And there's a whole store on there.
Great.
And there's still time to order before the holidays, right?
I need to work on that originally, it was supposed to be last week, but I'm gonna talk to Pacific and see if we can get it through this Friday.
And there, yeah, that'd be good, and there's really a lot of cool stuff. I mean, Bobby's wearing a t-shirt, and the face masks are really good.
Right.
But there's sweatshirts and-
Sweatshirts, hats-
Hats.
Folos, yes, we've got a variety on there.
Great, thank you. And my second question was regarding the radio. Is there actually gonna be like a Hatfield person, is there any sort of conversation happening with a DJ?
So, this is actually, and this is a rarity to get, we have 29 minutes and 30 seconds of dedicated Hatfield radio. This is our produce, there is no ads, there's no nothing running during it, it is, we are giving them the entire program.
Gotcha, so it's done ahead of time, and then here's our 29 minutes and 36. Perfect, okay, that's, I didn't know if it was live, I didn't know-
So, our voice, our voice of Hatfield, as I've called him, Paul Abbey, will be our emcee as always.
Great.
And he'll do the intro and give a history of Luminarium a little bit, we'll have our speakers, you know, so, yeah, it's all gonna be that.
Perfect.
And we're actually in the process of pulling together, and certainly, if anyone has, I'll make a call out tonight, and we're gonna put it on Facebook as well. We're trying to incorporate music from Hatfield, from the band, from the handbell ringers, all of those incorporate that into it, so it's not just, you know, professionally-produced carols, this is actually all Hatfield.
Right.
So, we're working on that, so if anyone has, again, we have the, we have a lot from the last couple of years of the Congregational Church concerts, but we don't have a lot from the band, Ken Longstreet's provided me some, and I've reached out to Mr. Morris now to see if he can get anything, but if people have, and everyone has their cellphones now, and everyone records things, so, anyone out there, if you have past concerts of holiday Christmas music from the bands or the chorus or anything, send them on over, reach out to us, planning@hatfield350.com, you'll get it to us, and we'll mix them all in.
Can I make a question on that? There is a young girl in town, I think she's a year older than Hadley, her name, I think, is Sophia Panilio, is that right? You know, she, at the pageant, every year at Our Lady of Grace, she sings Silent Night, and then she sings it in Polish, and it's absolutely, like, it gives you the goosebumps, and that would be a great, maybe a great addition to it.
So, certainly, anything we can get, and again, thank you in advance.
She really is, you literally get goosebumps when you listen to her, and, you know, especially singing it in Polish, so, I don't know, I don't know if I know how to contact her, I wonder if the school could help contact her and get her recorded, it's just a thought, she's, it's really unique and beautiful.
Yeah, anything we can get, and then, well, I'm gonna be sitting with John and getting that all mixed up, and produce that whole program, so, the intention is that the entire program will be 100% Hatfield.
I'm gonna write this minute, text you her name.
Okay.
So that we remember. Okay. Just a thought. Did you have any more questions?
No, I just can't, I think it's incredible, the amount of work that Bobby, yourself, and everybody on the committee, and John, and, I mean, but you're, the whole committee, you know, Bob, and I absolutely agree, since day one, which was like two years ago.
Four.
Four years ago, oh, man.
But who's counting?
Time flies, but you know, it's just, and you've gone with the flow, right? You had to go with the flow, there's not, certain things, there's nothing that any of us have control over, and you've, everybody on the 350th Committee has made the best of it, and so, I, and I know you guys, I would imagine you hear it all the time, but I'm just really impressed with everything, and again, just the different concepts, the different ideas, it's just all coming together.
Kind of made some lemonade out of lemons this year.
Yeah.
And put together some events, and again, Bobby gets the credit for these, but, you know, the food, the night we had, sort of the Taste, or whatever it was called, with the concert, and the concert over there with Trailer Trash and everybody in their cars, I mean, these were things that weren't on the schedule-
Yeah.
-but ended up really being fun and unique, and just felt so good this year when we weren't able to do anything, so.
And can you believe that it's been-
And we're just gonna keep partying into the next year, we're just gonna-
Which is kind of funny, because I was just gonna say, can you believe it's been 11 months already since the gala?
Wow, that doesn't seem possible.
Who would've thought that, no?
I know, that night.
Yeah.
I was like, this is gonna be the best year ever!
One of the events, you actually didn't have to change anything.
I haven't been out on New Year's Eve.
It's the only event, it's the only event we haven't had to change.
Yeah.
I have not been out on New Year's Eve for years, and I, you know, we partied like rock stars at the gala, I'm never going out on New Year's Eve again, because that was the bad one.
I just want to say, say one thing, thank you very much, and Uncle Heine would be very proud, I want to say that.
That's gonna make me cry, that's very sweet, you're absolutely right.
It was interesting, we actually had a small meeting on the Time Capsule, oh, two or three weeks ago here, and there's a bunch of memorabilia from the 325th, and also from the 300th, and in the 300th-
Not the Go Hatfield sign.
No, no, that's at Smith Academy, last I knew, still, but in the 300th, there is a letter from President Reagan, that Uncle Heine sent him the commemorative coin from Hatfield, and the letter back from the White House, thanking him for all his stuff.
That's very cool.
Uncle Heine was a cool guy in his purple-
Sorry, take that back, not President Reagan, Coolidge, sorry, Coolidge.
Coolidge?
No, hang on.
Jeez!
All right, now, now I'm gonna shut up, because now I'm making myself look better, sorry. He was here, Reagan was here for a Coolidge event, that's what it was.
Oh, okay.
Very cool. I remember him in his purple winter sweater with his Go Hatfield sign.
I think, you know, to your point, though, Brian, and we put a post up on Facebook last week, you know, on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and it kind of reflected back on the year, and, you know, the fact that-
Your guess.
-the fact that we had 11 events since COVID started, actually 11 events since the incorporation day event on May 31st, and did them in a safe manner, you know, and yes, the committee and a lot of volunteers stepped up, but it was also the townspeople and the participants at these events, because everyone had to do their part, and that was the only way it was gonna be possible. So, yeah, we certainly appreciate the townspeople's support. The businesses have been phenomenal, you know, and continuing to support, I mean, the banners were, you know, we started out with 30 banners along Main Street, and we were talking last night, we're up to 70 banners now, so a lot of fan-
And it's not too late to order a banner, because they're going to go back up in the spring and be up through the parade, and then you get to keep it.
Correct.
And so, it's not just for businesses, I mean, we have one as a family, there's plenty of families that purchase banners, and people should think about doing that if they want to do it, it's all on that hatfield350.com website, if people are interested in that, because, and that was a lot of work too, because Bobby and Anna Holehart really, and Garrett, I guess, did a lot of the installing the banners and giving it a lot of thought about placement and where they should be, and, you know, I think people noticed that, you know, they were in front of the appropriate places, and it really, really made town look so good, I'm looking forward to having them go back out.
Yeah, and next year, again, they'll go up in the spring, also in the spring, the 350th has purchased additional American flags, so the flags will now extend not just on Main Street and out to the Legion, but will go all the way out to Elm Court, so those will all go up next year, so we'll have the entire route all the way coming into town with all the American flags, and then the banners will be added in additional, and, you know, they'll be up all through all of next year, so we're, as you said, this is gonna kind of turn into a two-year, two-year event.
That's okay, you know what, just longer time to celebrate.
Eventually, we'll party again all together in person.
Maybe you ought to have another gala at the very end.
Whenever that is.
Well, you know, I'll tell you, the people had such a great time at that gala.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I can't tell you how many people came up to me and Anna, or Anna, or me, and said, "Let's do it every year." You know, I mean, people, it was really, really great, that was a really good event.
Or you just have a huge event, a gala, but just come as you, come dressed as you are type thing. You're like, it's over, it's behind us type thing.
It's fun to get dressed up. But the, one of the things I just want to mention about the events that we managed to plan or, you know, salvage through this year, it was such an undertaking, because there were things that were changing and having to be adjusted right up to the time of the event. You know, it was, planning something this year was different than any other event planning ever. You know, because you just, there was so much you had to just do in the last minute and everything. So Bobby really just knocked it out of the park on every single, every single thing. And he's right about residents. And I think people have just been so happy to have these things that they could do and know that they would be done safely, which is really nice. Thank you. If there's any more information, we do have one more meeting.
December 15.
Right before. So let's just extend an invitation to Bob. If you want to come at that point to talk about maybe more specific information about road closures, or if there's any timing changes or anything, so maybe people should make sure they, you know, watch that meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll have that. And again, it's going to, we're going to continue to develop it with, you know, with Mike and with Bob as far as the safety side of things. And we'll get that information out. But yeah, absolutely, we can do that. Kind of get a final, final informational piece out to everybody.
Well, all this information, can we get it up on the website? Because not everybody has social media, so.
Yes, I would like to do that. And I was going to talk with the fire chief as well.
Yeah, about getting
Because normally, the Fire Fridays Association handles the preparations for Illuminarium. So I just want to make sure that we have enough information and to let people know that some of, you know, some of the, well, most of the activities that we normally have Illuminarium will not be taking place this year.
So a quick summary, quick summary for Illuminarium. Everybody get your candles and bags out. There's nothing in front of Town Hall. It'll be all broadcast on whatever.
100.9.
615s, the fireworks. There's going to be some road closures. So take a look. Try to stay in your car. And during fireworks, cars will be stopped. So you might be at a better point of seeing it stopping someplace else and seeing it.
No, I mean, honestly, I think you're better off to watch the fireworks from somewhere else and then come down to enjoy the candles afterwards. You know, and this year, there is also going to be a stipulation that headlights stay on.
Yes.
And I'm glad I remembered to say that, because this is something that Chief DeKoschak feels very strongly about this year. So I know people are used to turning the headlights off, but that is not going to be encouraged. That's going to be strongly discouraged this year.
We'll get that on the website. And Scott Murray's back, our contact at the Gazette.
Oh, good, yeah. They should be running some articles on this.
I was going to reach out to him and
I wonder if we could have, like, one of our, do we have a signboard?
Bob's going to have multiple message boards.
Okay, so that say like headlights on and
And that's also part of the, with the temporary road closures as well, is that way during the fireworks, you don't have all the lights on, you know, this and that, you know, people trying to cruise through.
Right. Once you're stopped, it's okay.
You can turn your lights off when you park. So that'll also help us with that, too.
Yep. Very good.
Excellent.
All right, Bobby, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe, stay healthy.
Thanks, Bobby. You, too.
Okay. We sure do talk a lot, don't we?
No comment.
Some of them.
Won't mention any names, will we?
Yeah, no, I'm not going to mention any names.
Okay. So Marlene.
That's very
In 25 words or less. Let's get to your stuff.
I can do that. Tax recap. Actually, we are wrapping that up this week. I expect that we are wrapping that up this week. We have a financial meeting tomorrow with the accountant, the assistant assessor, and Sharon and myself. So we're just, we're reviewing the draft management letter from the auditor and just going over the recap and hopefully be submitting that by the end of this week. So.
Nice. Good job, you guys. Yep.
And then we just have that the articles were approved.
So special town meeting recap, just, you know, anybody that wasn't in attend, well, sure, there are many people not in attendance or didn't, haven't seen it. But we had two articles on the warrant. So the town voted to acquire the easements that were necessary for the Route 5 water and sewer project. And at the same time, we appropriated $20,000 from free cash, should we need to work out any details with the property owners. The second article was a five-year lease for some equipment and vehicles. And I think that was the shortest town meeting I've ever been at.
It was short, but you know, I was really grateful for how many people came. I mean, it was, it turned out to be nice weather, which helped, I'm sure. But, you know, it was really nice to see how many people came and
I was very glad. More people just kept coming. I'm like, this is
I know, it was really great. It was, it was short, but it was, it was great to see people, you know, be involved and go out of their way on a Saturday to participate.
Yeah, and we appreciate the townspeople's support on those, on those two articles.
Yes.
Both are very important to continue Hatfield moving forward and our infrastructure down on Route 5 and our equipment. So thank you to the townspeople. And John, once again, for being there with his crew.
Of course. And the fire department did a lot of work setting up.
Oh, yeah.
And that was, that was much appreciated. So big thanks to Chief, Chief Flaherty. And there was a good number of members of the department down there. That was, was great.
And Lydia's crew was there. I mean, it was, again, like, like many things that happened in town, it was a team effort, and that's why it was successful. So thank you, everybody.
Town Hall renovations?
I'll say a few things. As much as I've been in discussion with the architect the last year over certain issues, I'm pretty very happy with the fact that our punch list is down to like a few items. So I do give him credit for being attentive to the punch list items and taking care of it. The project itself is pretty much complete, except for some warranty issues. The only issue we had was on the ramp, there's a small piece of electric heat. We questioned that, that piece of baseboard because of the fact that if you open a door, it's not going to really, in the middle of winter, it's not going to really heat up that, that ramp area. But the answer we got back was the fact that the engineer felt that was an unoccupied space. Therefore, the heat that was put in there was just to temper the air. So that, that's an issue that I've been talking to Jerry and Phil, and I believe we'll take care of that in-house. So that'll, that'll satisfy that. So I just want to say, overall, the Town Hall, the elevator's running. Most of the punch list items are all done. And the downstairs is another issue, which is looking really great. And I want to give Jerry and Phil a lot of credit for their efforts and works on the COA, because what I hear on the COA newsletter, they're going to be starting to bring some people back, but in small groups, and start doing a couple things down there. But if you get a chance, take a look downstairs. You'd be pretty surprised and amazed at how nice that, that came out with Jerry
I'm so happy about that.
coordinating things and Phil. So I guess.
Well, and, you know, I guess at some point, this won't be an agenda item, maybe fairly soon. It's been a perpetual agenda item. But Ed, your oversight of this has just been invaluable.
Agreed.
I mean, honestly, I put just my total trust in you, in, you know.
It was a huge benefit having him.
Oh, gosh, it was such a huge benefit that
It's really been, it's really been a team effort. It takes a lot of people to push that rock. It really does.
Well, and a big thank you goes to Phil and to Marlene.
But the nice things that's happened out of this project is getting the COA done and putting the ramp in the back like everybody wanted. So those got accomplished. So I think, I think there's going to be a lot more use of that COA once people see.
I hope so.
People are going to be very pleased with it down there.
They got a nice, it's nice down there.
It was a long time coming, and it was a lot of discussion and raised tempers over the last few years. But I think as the three of us had mentioned back a year or so ago to the COA and their board of directors, we understood the need. We understood that something needed to change. And collectively, as Ed just said, collectively, we were all able to come together and get it done. But I want to echo what Diana said. And Ed, thank you very much for, for being part of that process and being the eyes and ears of the board, but also lending your, your expertise and your background to that project.
Everybody on this board has, has amazing expertise, and everybody jumps in where the needs are. I mean, like, you've taken over the COVID type of thing. Diane's been with the 350th, and we still work together. I think it's been a really good group. And then we got great people like Maureen and Phil and police chief, fire chiefs, and Sharon and
Yeah, it's a good
A lot of things have changed in the last few years, but it's been the board trying to work towards those goals. And there's never been an issue of, you know, just one person. It's always been a collective.
Team effort.
Because that's how you got to do it. You can't, one thing you got to do in town, unless you have a team effort, things don't get done. I mean, state, town, or government or whatever. So.
But it's really easy when you have team members that you can rely on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like Ed has, we've been able to rely on Ed through the Town Hall project. So thank you, Ed. And Marlene and Phil, because it's, you know, yeah. Huge thanks to all of you guys. I just pushed the paperwork.
Marlene gets a lot of credit, too, because she's been on top of the billing and the estimating.
Absolutely.
And Phil's been at meetings, too, trying to steer in the right direction. So it, again, it's, it's a team effort. So it's everybody working together towards that goal. So I mean, I mean, I give Marlene credit for helping with all that she does. She always goes above and beyond.
Thank you. But Ed, I really, I was very grateful to have you aboard and, you know, go to
Now, what are you going to do with yourself?
Should we take out another project?
Phase three.
Well, we still have to discuss.
We've got the Route 5 project now.
Second floor is open for discussion.
That's right. That's true. That's right. It does need to be discussed. Well, let's give him like a week off. Let's give him like a week off.
There's sewer projects that we will have to have discussion in the future. There's going to be probably trying to see in the future another grant to keep that sewer line extending to the Whately line. And there's, there's a lot of other issues.
I really want to see us try to build a council on aging. I mean, that's my big dream. But, I mean, I know the downstairs is great, but I would really, you know, I think we
Some people want a library. I mean, that's another issue. Library combination, libraries, COA, and some other stuff, you know, I mean, who knows?
A lot of options on the table.
Yeah. And the need for museum space and
One thing you can't do is sit still. So
That's right. That is very true.
Keep moving.
Keep moving, keep planning.
Very true.
But seems like it's it?
That is it.
Nothing unanticipated, Marlene?
Not that I can think of.
Excellent.
I'm just hoping maybe the next meeting, we could have some kind of update on cares or where the money
Yes, yeah, you brought that up. So we will. So
That's a good point.
So we, we have encumbered, Marlene, correct me if I'm wrong, we've encumbered the funds through the end of the year. Or did I say, you know, it's all, it's all accounted for, it's all encumbered.
It is. It's accounted for.
So, but it does end on December 31st.
Invoices were put through, and the accountant set up a cares account. And expenses that we believed were eligible were charged to that account.
Right.
I filed reports with the state. This is what we have for expenses. They may come back and say, tell us that there is something or some items that are not eligible. Therefore, then we
We've submitted everything. You submitted, you and Bob, depending on what the process, Bob, Chief Flaherty.
I planned out payroll through the end of the year.
That's what I mean. So, yeah.
Absolutely. And then expenses that we were aware of. The school asked me for the spreadsheet for what were school-related items, and I sent that to them. And I didn't get a chance to see it. Riley did send back a response. So I'll take a look at that and just make sure that if there's been any changes.
Sure. So
But it still might be a good topic for
Oh, absolutely. And I think another important fact that we haven't really talked about lately is, is the, the amount of funding was about, was about $289,000.
It was 289 was, was what had been allocated for Hatfield. In round one, there was a distribution of funds. And that was, I believe, $29,000.
Correct. Yep.
And we did not spend all of that. And my understanding had been that whatever was unspent would go back. But since round two, I was told that we could spend that unspent balance. So we have done that. And we pretty well have spent the entire 289, but we have not actually received those funds yet.
Right, right. The money, this is one of those you could spend, knowing the money was coming. And then hopefully, there will be a round three or another, another phase of this, since COVID is back on the rise nationally. But, so 289,000, and roughly how much was paid for the, for the schools?
Roughly 188,000 with schools.
So, so roughly 188,000 for the schools. And we're glad to do it. We had the funding to assist. And then the other 100,000, basically, within the town, COVID, COVID, again, these are all COVID-related expenses, whether it was equipment or man-hours or what have you. In this case of the schools, it was the upgrade of the HVAC system and some other large, large expenses that, that were paid for. But, you know, it's the cares, it's the federal money, and it's money that the Hatfield taxpayers really didn't have to pay to have done. So we took advantage of the opportunity we had, and hopefully, there'll be another round, because we just don't know, you know.
Clearly, the need for the coordinator's position does not vanish on December 31st.
Oh, my goodness, absolutely not.
Probably just the opposite. So hopefully, there will be another round. But I do think that, you know, it's probably a good idea to put that on the agenda and really let townspeople know. I mean, I know we just sort of said in general terms, you know, how the money was used and whatnot. And then didn't we talk about having the school administration come to a meeting to talk about
We did. And I had contacted the school administrator, a school superintendent, and he was going to reach out to the school committee. And I did see an email from Jill Robinson that they'd be glad to set something up with the
Jill's the chairwoman of the committee, just in case people didn't know.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. And I just haven't received, you know, an update. But I'll be glad to follow up with the school superintendent.
Maybe our first meeting in January or something like that. I mean, I don't think it's realistic to expect all of them to come in the week before the holidays. So.
Well, and again, I think it's the opportunity
He was on the call earlier.
It's the opportunity that we're trying to present to the school committee to be televised. I mean, you know, we know they're recorded on their meetings, but it's a different medium than, than having John here. So that's
It's somewhat different audience.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So, yeah.
People who watch here may not watch the school.
Right. So we just want everyone to hear everything and, you know.
Yep. Okay. Very good.
Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.